This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we will go ahead and call this evening's regular city council meeting to order for Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. Councilmember Boyle will be here, but it is his daughter's first T-ball game, so he's running a little late. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, may we please have roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Absent, excused.
Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Running a little late, but he'll be here.
Councilmember Strobin?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Servini?
Present. Thank you. Brings us to citizens' public comment. And Clerk, can you please call up the public comments we have from the audience this evening?
Betsy?
Welcome. Good to see you again.
Yes, well, hello, my name is Betsy Hoppy. I am the Chair of La Center United, and I wanted to just announce a couple of upcoming events. One is, as soon as tomorrow, we're going to be hosting a youth mental health conversation, and we'll be sharing some of the healthy youth survey data that need, thank you, let us share, and talking about what we might do about it to help the kiddos in school. Our next meeting is April 20th, that's Cannabis Conversations, where we're going to help parents understand how to start a conversation with their kids about whatever topic. It doesn't have to be cannabis, it can be alcohol, it can be how to use a cellphone and then keep it secure and such kinds of things. I don't know, maybe because the people also... And then also, we wanted to thank the police here for hosting our Drug Take Back event on April 22nd. So, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for all that you do.
You're welcome.
Kimberly?
Nice sunny evening. My name is Kimberly Goheen Elbin, La Center resident here. I noticed that on the reader board that the council meeting was not advertised other than today, so I'm thinking maybe we should put it out there, you know, the following Thursday, that there's a meeting that next Wednesday. I kind of pay attention to that and then put it in my notes. At the last Monday's Vancouver City Council meeting, excuse me, it came out that the Clark County water is polluted. I didn't get the name of the pollution, and they do not know where the pollution's coming from, so where it's contaminated from, possibly Hanford, but I don't know. So people need to kind of maybe test their water. Also, as far as the city parks, I'd like to see fruit trees planted and some berry bushes. I think that's real important, especially with our farmland being taken away quite a bit here in Clark County due to some certain agendas. I printed this vacancy off for the, to fill a vacancy that you guys have, and there's no dates to it, so I'm kind of a little bit happy that you're going to be, I suppose, appointing the mayor tonight, but then it's kind of misleading because, first of all, I went on, it says that you advertise. I don't see anything on your main copy of your website, anything about the mayor being gone. And then also, so I look on, I always go to the website, the first one, but down below, you have one that you can push on. I didn't know that, but then it's in very small writing. I think it's important that the citizens know that our mayor has vacated. Also, in the La Center School District, I appreciate putting in writing that whereas the La Center School Board recognizes that families are the first teachers of their children. I really appreciated that. I always told my children the same thing. And there's quite a few good things in here. However, when it comes to whereas education is the foundation of our democracy as a nation, I'd like to have that corrected. There's numerous places in the school board, school paper stuff, that it says we're a democracy, we are actually a republic. We just saluted the flag to the Republic of America that uses democracy in our government, but we are a republic. And I'd like to actually correct that, please. Put a little check mark on that one. It also uses equity, which is a sign of a United Nations entity trying to take over America, believe it or not. And then, of course...
Kimberly, your time's up.
And I think that's about all I have to say about all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get some trees out there, something that grows.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. Clerk, are there any callers calling in to speak this evening?
There's a couple callers. We'll just wait a second for them to unmute themselves.
Yes, please, callers, if you are wishing to speak this evening, please remember to press star six to unmute yourself. Not hearing any. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
None to be read.
All right, thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda. Any items needing to be reviewed for additional discussion?
No.
Motion?
Someone?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. This evening, we have a presentation from C-Trans, and we have the pleasure of having the CEO, Sean Donahue, and he's going to be addressing, well, he's also the Chief Capital Projects and Planning Officers, Scott?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Scott Patterson, and so you get to be the one giving us the presentation, I presume? All right, well, we welcome you. Thank you for doing that.
Happy to. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council and community. My name is Scott Patterson. I'm the Chief Capital Projects and Planning Officer at C-Trans. Sean Donahue, our CEO, was hoping to be here this evening. He was planning to, but had kind of a last-minute conflict. So I am kind of taking the presentation portion of it and am certainly able, hopefully, to answer any questions, thoughts, concerns that you may have. I do want to take notes since I've been with the agency for quite a while. I've been up to a number of council meetings over the years. It's been a while. In fact, it was the building, I think the last time I was here, right over here. In fact, when we were launching what was the precursor to what I'm going to talk about this evening with the current service, we launched the Connector. It was back in 2006, and then I just saw former Mayor Irish in the crowd back here, and we launched that service. And it worked fairly well for a number of years, but what we wanted to talk to the council about this evening is last year, we kind of overhauled the former Connector service, which was a dial-a-ride service to what we have today, which is a new service that we are calling the Current. And this is C-Trans On-Demand Curb-to-Curb Shared Vehicle Transit Service. Anyone within the city limits can actually book a ride. One of the things that's different about the service that we have today versus what we had just a couple of years ago is that people can schedule the ride at any point throughout the day. We increased the service span. So we operate weekdays from 5:30 in the morning until 7:00 PM in the evening, and then weekends, both Saturday and Sunday, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And so what people can do, there's a map in the presentation, I think there's some copies out on the table as well, but anybody can book a ride. They can do it through the website, they can call the C-Trans office, they can download a transit app, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, but they can ride anywhere within the city of La Center or the city of Ridgefield. Essentially, the way that the on-demand service works is there's at least one C-Trans vehicle either in La Center and/or the city of Ridgefield. Sometimes we can have more than one, it just depends on demand. And what they will do is there is a fixed route that currently operates between the Ridgefield Junction Park and Ride to C-Trans 99th Street Transit Center off of I-5 in the Hazeldale area, and that connects to a number of other C-Trans fixed routes, including our commuter service that goes to downtown Portland as well. And so it's a much more, I guess, robust demand service. And what I wanted to do is just kind of walk you through a little bit about the technology, because that's what is really making the service today a little bit different, quite a bit different. We can, or anybody that wants to can download the app. It's available anywhere you can get apps. It's also available directly off of C-Trans website at Ctran.com. Works very much kind of like an Uber or a Lyft.
What's the name of the app?
I'm sorry, it is, it's called Transit, the Transit App. Yes.
Thank you.
You bet. And really, what it enables people to do is, it's just like Uber, Lyft. If you want to schedule a ride within an hour, you can actually book a ride in advance up to two days. And there are options to actually schedule recurring rides as well, depending on the situation of the individual, but there is the ability to be able to book standing rides. One of the interesting things that we've seen, we launched this service back in January of last year, and right now, I think the average wait time for customers in La Center and/or Ridgefield is just right around 12 to 15 minutes. So the service is, we're trying very hard to make it as on-demand as you typically see with some of even the more private providers that are out there. The cost to ride is the cost of a local fixed route fare, which today is $1. And we also have free service for anybody under the age of 18. We had programs for students that were free, and then recently, the Washington State Legislature passed a transportation funding package last year that included reimbursing transit systems throughout the state of Washington. So now everybody under the ages of 18 can ride free as well. Next slide, please, thank you. These are just actually just a few more photos that are in the presentation of what the actual app looks like when you're using it on the phone. You can also book rides on the website. We have a separate, what we're calling ridethecurrent.com website, but it's also linked directly from the main C-Trans website, which is just Ctran.com. So you can book a ride that way as well. And then there's always the option of calling our customer service office and scheduling a ride over the phone for people that don't have the technology readily available for them. And as I mentioned, next slide, you can ride for the cost of just $1.50 for honored citizens. And we also have, in addition to the students that I talked about, a new pass that was implemented by the C-Trans Board of Directors earlier, well, I guess it was last year now, which is a Veterans Pass. So anybody that has served or is serving can get a free pass as well. Next slide. This is a picture. We use Ford Transit vans. They're fully accessible, so people that are in mobility devices can also call, and we've got ramps that will deploy. But the vehicles themselves are relatively new, and they've worked out very well, very recognizable, so you know it's actually a C-Trans current vehicle that is picking you up, and that is consistent throughout the fleet. We have a number of these current zones throughout the C-Trans service area, Camas Washugle, WSU Vancouver, Salmon Creek area. There's a couple of them in the, one by the Port of Vancouver, and also another one that is in the Rose Village neighborhood in the city of Vancouver. Next slide. This is just a heat map, which shows where our current zones are today and where that ridership is being generated and is generally focused in on. Since our launch last year, we've got over 23,000 trips that we've provided. We have close to, in fact, I think we might be at or slightly above 3,000 registered users. So when you sign up, what we're trying to do is have the opportunity to be able to get the information, just like you would use when you're signing up for something through an app device, to where you've got easy access to be able to schedule the ride. Seventy percent of those 3,000 have now taken multiple trips, and we've got the average number of trips per rider that's registered so far is at 30. So it's a service that, with these numbers, kind of indicate that you're going to continue to see some growth, and the people that are using it are using it not just once, but multiple times. Next slide. Some other facts and figures. A quarter of the trips for all of our current service areas throughout our service area, throughout the county, occur here in La Center and also Ridgefield. I mentioned this, I think, earlier, but the average wait time is about 12 minutes. So if you were to get on your app during the service hours, try to book a ride, you shouldn't have to wait longer than 10 to 15 minutes. Average trip distance is about four miles, and the most common destinations are right here, downtown La Center, Alene, and then the Junction Park and Ride down I-5 near Ridgefield. Next slide. These are just some of the customer comments that have come in. I'm not going to take the time to read them all, but we've had really good, positive feedback from a number of the riders and our regular users of the system. Next slide. Wanted to also talk about, one of the things that C-Trans is going to be doing this year is we have a fall service change. Typically, in September of each year, C-Trans does what is, at times, a pretty significant service change. This year will be one of those years because we will be opening our second BRT line in the city of Vancouver, between downtown Vancouver and 192nd and East Vancouver. And as part of that, we're going to be introducing a new transit center. So there's a lot of routes, particularly on the east side of Vancouver, that will be changing this fall, but we're also going to be adding service on the current Route 48, which operates between the 99th Street Transit Center today and the city of Ridgefield and the Ridgefield Junction. And that is where the connection is made with the Current for people wanting to come into Vancouver or Portland or somewhere else throughout the C-Trans system. That is where that connection point takes place. What we're looking to be able to do this fall is to expand the number of trips, expand the duration throughout the day, and include a stop at the Alene Casino for the Route 48. One of the things that we've noticed, as people have been booking trips on the Current in both Ridgefield and the Center, there's a fair, fairly high travel demand to Alene. And we've also been working with them and talking with them. They've got a number of employees that live throughout the region that are having challenges with parking right now, and so we're trying to be able to accommodate that. In so doing, what this will do is it will free up even more current service to be available for rides happening within the city of La Center, the city of Ridgefield, and ultimately going down to connect with the rest of the Vancouver system out in Hazeldale. And so that 12-minute average delay today, hopefully, will actually shrink a little bit and become even less with the change that we're proposing for the Route 48. Wanted to also mention, and Councilmember Boyle, who's been at some of the C-Trans board meetings as of late, as the alternate, we're going to be having a Board of Directors workshop later this month, April 28th, I believe, where we're going to be engaging the board on a bigger discussion about the future of transit and what our partner jurisdictions want to see in terms of future service improvements. It's been a while since C-Trans has updated its 20-year plan, and this is the process to begin to do that. So I guess, just to kind of recap where we're at, as, you know, as an agency, we're really excited to be able to partner with La Center, to be able to offer the service and enhance it through technology with the current service that we have today, with continued improvements to the Route 48. And then we will be engaging and look forward to engaging more about what the future holds as we look past some of these near-term service enhancements and sort of service improvements that we're making. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions or take any comments as well.
Your presentation was very well, very well.
Thank you.
The only question I had was the app.
Yes.
Good to see you guys are expanding, getting out here more.
Appreciate that. And, you know, and if anybody ever has any issues with the app or any of the service out here, don't hesitate to give us a call. We have, my planning project manager was kind of the spearhead behind the current service, and he is talking to people on a daily basis and continues to take a strong interest in it. And so it's doing well. I did forget to mention, if I have just a second here, we were actually averaging about 190, close to 200 monthly rides with the Connector service back in, you know, pre-pandemic in 2019. With the current service, we're already in excess of 300 rides. So it's indicative of, I think, the increased service span and easier ways to book rides. We're beginning to see that already pay off, and a lot of our local fixed route ridership is also starting to come back since the pandemic as well. And so, yeah, we certainly are looking forward to continued growth in the years ahead.
Councilmember Strobin, can you play your mic over, please? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any kind of data or knowledge about the age for your ridership from La Center?
That's, I don't hear this evening, but I can ask our staff, and we could probably get some information. Certainly, the number of trips that are, you know, with specific destinations, I'm not sure if we require age.
No, I didn't know if, whether their passes might give you an idea of not only where they're going, but what age group is making more use of the app, and give us some insights, perhaps, into how we can do a better job of educating and getting the word out to groups about the availability as well.
Sure. No, I think that would be great. We could certainly follow up. I'll go back and we'll poll some of the data, at least the data that we have, to get a sense. And, you know, I know we, you know, we try to advertise a lot through social media. We do other, more traditional forms of advertising as well, but, you know, we're always looking and trying to participate in as many community events as we can. So if there are ever any, you know, public opportunities to be able to help spread the word, we've got a team at C-Trans that goes out and is dedicated to trying to, you know, get out in our communities as much as they can to also help spread the word. So if there's new events that are being planned that we don't know about today, please let us know, and we'll make sure we've got a presence here.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for coming out. I appreciate it. You guys are always on top of it and quick to respond and get some information back out to everybody. And I was going to try and actually make a test ride before this meeting, but it did not happen. But I do plan to do it.
No, no worries.
Make you put your money where your mouth is.
I was going to say, I did hear from the Mayor Pro Tem, T-ball, was their first game?
Oh, yes, my daughter, yeah, her first T-ball game ever. She made it first, had trouble getting the second, you know.
Well, you know, that's, you got to start, right?
Yeah.
Okay, hey, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. All right, we also have a presentation this evening with Superintendent Rosenkrantz for Schools. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present. And it's, I guess, more of, less of a presentation, more of just a report of what's happening. I was high, have a high level of interest with C-Trans and options for... Is that better? I'm not doing it. I play this game at home. You're not doing it right. So I have a keen interest in C-Trans and options for youth. When was the Connector before? It seemed that we didn't have as good a service. This is definitely more like Lyft and Uber, and so options for our kids, I think, are going to be very helpful. So what I want to do tonight is just share some of the amazing things that continue to go on. And I talk about the high quality of things happening, also knowing that we're continuing to work to improve. It doesn't mean I'm shying away from what the problems or the challenges we face, but I don't want those to overshadow the amazing work that's going on. And so I do have kind of a laundry list of items. Today, we did fentanyl presentations to our middle school and high school students to inform them about the dangers of fentanyl. Deputy...
Sergeant Bill Sofianos.
Sergeant Sofianos, thank you. Yes, he presented. It's the name, gets me every time. And so middle school and high school students were, had a presentation on that. That means we've worked with families, we've worked with our students, and then our nursing corps just picked up a batch of Narcan, and we have now placed two doses of Narcan in every AED kit on our campuses. So if you are working with someone who's down and you don't know, you're going to call for the AED anyway, which then will bring two doses of Narcan with you, and so that'll be readily available. You don't have to say, hey, go get me some Narcan. You just say, go get me the AED, and everybody knows where that is. Kindergartners wrote letters to the big bad wolf, asking them not to eat them, but eat something else instead. And so very cute letters, like, please, Mr. Wolf, would you eat cake? Or have some hot dogs or something? Oh, not hot dogs, no, they were, anyway, it was up on the kindergarten walls, and it was just had to share. Fourth grade, working on Oregon Trail, the teachers over spring break built, put the desks together, put PVC pipe and sheets over the top to make covered wagons out of their desk areas, paper fireplaces there, and some foam logs for seating around the campfire to tell stories, immersing them in the Oregon Trail. In the hallway is some farm animals, and then a desert scene. Very cool stuff. Birthday books, they just celebrated, it is April, April birthdays, so the kids get to come down and select a book, reinforcing literacy. It's becoming assessment season. We're getting trained on how to give assessments, so the state assessment's coming. We do also screener assessments for reading, math, to the state assessments is of the learning of instruction. The screeners we use are for instruction, so we can tailor instruction to what our kids need. The green shed, if you've gone by the lower parking lot, the green shed has started to make growth, or it's up. We have roof trusses up, so the hope is, within the month, we'll have that completed. And then a donation from Bonneville Power for a battery system, a solar charged battery system to light the kiosk and light the gardens when those eventually get put in place. New reader board at the elementary school. So elementary school actually has a dedicated reader board. Used to be a district reader board, but if I need to announce something as a district, I can put it on all three reader boards, meaning that the high school reader board, the holes are dug, the posts were donated. We're getting ready to put that in, hopefully by the end of April. by the end of April. And then and then a continued focus on reading. I keep I've made a point to talk about reading in every single conversation about school this year because the mandates around COVID caused us caused kids to not be able to read. And it's it's as an educator, it's horrific to think that we would have kids not being able to read. We need them reading by third grade. And so we are pouring resources into our elementary school to try to reinforce reading, and we're seeing gains on our screeners. We're seeing kids' reading levels come up, which is just music to my ears as an educator. I do want Kimberly, thank you for highlighting the parents are the first educator. It is something I hold true dear to my heart. The parents are the first educator, they're the first teacher. It's also their kids, not our kids. I mean, we need to partner with parents. And I do need to apologize that there's things happening in the school district that's drawing a lot of attention here. And but I will not apologize for focusing on family and trying to reinforce the quality of life here in the center focused on families and trying to work with families and partner with families. So to that end, we are doing our best to maintain a positive outlook and go in with full transparency of what we're doing. I'll talk to anybody about it. I've talked to every single news station except Channel Eight. They did not talk to me. We even talked to Lars Larson, Clark County Today, Columbian, The Works, anybody that calls, I talk with them about it to share what we're trying to do is reinforce an environment that supports every kid that comes through our doors, regardless of how they identify or regardless of their abilities, that we're able to help them grow brain cells. And when they graduate in year or in grade 13, they have a path, and they know what they're doing, or at least have a general idea of what they're doing. I didn't know. So but I do take that very seriously, and I do I go back to something we started with the levy, which is I love the center. And so doing everything on our part to try to maintain quality of life in the youth that we're bringing up and hopefully conserve our community in the future. So questions?
Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. All right, that brings us to the first look for city parks, and we will turn that over to Mr. Brian Cass.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, council. So in following with the chief's tradition of first looks, which seemed to work pretty well, we have a brief overview of the proposed changes we're looking at for the parks code. Based on the feedback we get tonight, we'll then bring back an ordinance for council to consider in a public hearing at a future council meeting. Next slide, please. So currently, the center municipal code, Chapter 1225, regulates our parks, and it was last updated in 2009. However, it actually, there's some discrepancies between the code and the rule signs that are posted. So a lot of what we're doing here is changing the code to match the rules that everyone's supposed to be following out there. Primarily, we're looking at prohibiting smoking, vaping, and revising the hours for parks. We also have some changes in here to help address some complaints that we've seen pop up over the years since the park code was last updated. Next slide, please. So the the key goals of this are really, one, prohibit smoking and vaping. I think currently the signs say you can't do that, but if you really dig into the rules, it doesn't say that. So there's been some complaints around around that activity going on in parks. Correcting or changing the hours of the park from a fixed, you know, this hour to this hour to a dawn till dusk to recognize that, you know, people want to be in the parks longer in the winter or in the summer than they are in the winter, and we want to encourage that. And then we've also added or clarified some rules to regulate activities that probably don't work well in parks, such as archery, shooting sports, fireworks, should go without saying, vandalism, and then operation of RC vehicles. Next slide. So there's not a whole lot of changes in this, but the key changes are adding that definition of dawn to dusk and then revising the park hours to refer to that new definition, adding definition for smoking and vaping, following the RCWs, and then also prohibiting that activity. Again, prohibiting those activities that aren't really conducive to park atmospheres, shooting, archery, fireworks, vandalism, tagging, and then reckless operation of RC vehicles. So that is the short presentation that's trying to keep things tight tonight because I have several of them. But really, what I'm looking for from council this evening is feedback on those changes, comments on any other changes that may come to mind from council that we might want to integrate while we're opening up this section of code. And so I would, with that, turn it over to any comments that you may have. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions real quick.
Sure.
Brian, as far as the hours for the for the park, switching it to that, I believe the answer is no, but are there any parks within the city limits that require an employee to go out and close the gates?
Not currently. We have the ability to close gates at a few parks, but we're not, we haven't had to staff someone to do that at this time.
And the reason I ask is if if we go from daylight to dusk, that could put a maybe an undue burden on an employee. But if we don't have that, then then I think that's that's good the way it is.
I think if we ever get to that point, we could look at some sort of automatic timed closer or something like that to help mitigate for that. But again, currently, it hasn't been an issue, and we're hoping it doesn't become.
Yeah. And then when you refer to RC vehicles, were there is there a definition of RC vehicles? And was there a specific incident or multiple incidents that came to that? And the reason I ask is, are we talking about, you know, remote control cars that people are driving through the thing, or is that going to include drones?
It would include cars, drones, boats, you know, basically anything that's radio controlled. And when we come to the to the next presentation with the actual ordinance, there's some text in there that defines, you know, what a remote control vehicle is, and, you know, it includes all, you know, land, sea, air sort of thing.
One of the reasons I bring that up is because drones are specifically controlled through FAA, so they're not they're considered aircraft, not vehicles by the traditional Washington definition of a of a vehicle. So that's why I was curious.
Okay, we'll have to dig into that a little bit.
Yeah.
Make sure that we're consistent.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Absolutely.
My only question was, what was the definition of reckless operation?
I think we're still working on the exact language, and we may borrow some language from the chief's skateboarding ordinance or something similar. But, you know, basically, it's in a hazard and reckless manner that could endanger, you know, others or or bother.
I just have an eight year old boy that likes his RC cars, so have to know where to draw the line.
Yeah, the state has a pretty good definition of reckless. If we use that one, it'll be pretty narrow.
Do you need any more from us?
I don't. It's it's at the council's will. If there's any other rules you think we're missing that we should be thinking about. But really, it was just kind of, again, getting that first touch and that initial feedback so that we can bring back an ordinance to council that attempts to address all the points that the council.
Yeah, I only was going to ask about drones as well. How do we even address that as we grow? And I'm sure, you know, you see the it's not a commonplace complaint, but you do see the increasing issues posted on social media about drones in the parks and different things of that nature. So how do we go about managing that at the local level?
Yeah, I believe there is a way to do that that doesn't conflict with FAA regulations, but we'll we'll, again, do a little bit of research and make sure that we're following federal guidance.
Yeah, we have the authority to regulate the use of the parks, even if there is overlapping FAA regulation.
Maybe we just tell them to get up to the right altitude.
So some of these parks that are in the neighborhoods, they have paths that go right through the middle of them, right? Would the hours dusk to dawn, that's not going to include the paths, right?
I think by strict reading, it would, you know, and I guess that also opens up the question. We have some, like the new Riverside Trail, that are lit. So that might be something that we want to dig into a little bit more.
I know a lot of people like to walk, you know, right at dark time and such like that, or even after they do dinner. So at that point, you know, during the winter, that'd be illegal.
Okay, that's something we can look and look into.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Under Mayor's report, Betsy mentioned a couple of mine already, so I thank you for that. And I also want to remind everyone, we've got a work session scheduled for April 26 at 5:30, and that will be discussing the recycling contract. And I also wish to thank Desi and the staff involved for coordination and working with everyone to put on the recent blood drive, community blood ride. That went very well, and I appreciate the work that went into it. And that's all I have. So we will turn it over to for the attorney's report. And Bronson, I will let you speak to us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, everybody. I want a comment about our process on adopting ordinances and this first touch as being part of the process and looking at Maria. I think this is the second time that we've done a first touch. But I think it's really an improvement on the process because it lets us sort of introduce you to an upcoming ordinance hearing and the subject in sort of a more informal setting where we can solicit sort of questions like we just had. So I want to compliment Maria and the staff on doing this new first touch process. I think it really helps rather than.
Can we call it first look? Please?
First look? First touch? I don't know. First look, is that better? Okay. But I think it's better than just giving it to you for the first time and asking you to approve it the same night. Other than that, I was going to talk to you about Riverside Estates, but Councilmember Shrobin has asked me not to. So out of respect to his wishes, I won't. We had a hearing two weeks ago, March 31, and it was in Riverside Estates, you know, we've got the park, and then there's two open space tracks, which were going to be parks until we switched it to the Phase Four, the larger consolidated park. But these two tracks are to be kept by the HOA as open space. And there was nothing in the development agreements that allocated the cost of the maintenance of the open space between the Phase One and the Phase Two HOAs. And the reason there wasn't is because originally Riverside Estates was just going to be developed as by one developer, one home builder, and there was a going to be two HOAs, but now there is. So LGI, the builder of Phase One, asked the court to amend the approved plat to require allocation of the maintenance cost between Phase One and Phase Two HOA, which, you know, the city had no problem with the concept of allocating the cost. But the method of doing that is is not through a plat amendment. It's their CCNRs for both the HOAs and the CCNRs address who's responsible for maintenance cost. And the plat's really just a map of the subdivision. It's not a document that includes conditions of approval of the development. So I had to explain that to the judge. And the judge ruled that, no, you know, you don't do this through a plat amendment, go deal with it in your CCNRs. So it's really more of a process question than a principle thing. But from my perspective, it was an issue of the city just can't go inserting conditions on the plat that aren't based on any of the conditions of approval in either the hearing examiner decision or the development agreements. So the other thing that came up with the court was the First Amendment to the Development Agreement required the receiver to landscape the open space tracks. That hasn't been done yet. And so the court, and and I supported this motion, the court ordered the receiver to set aside funds from the sale of Phase Two for landscaping of those two tracks. So both the issues went the way we wanted them to. So a little bit of good news on Riverside Estates.
I thought we had, I thought those were some of the questions that we asked back then, that who was responsible for those open areas for the parks to join.
Yeah, no, you know, that it's been kicking around for a year now, probably. And just the way it rolled out, the Phase One HOA CCNR said they're responsible for maintaining those tracks. And then they had a bit of, you know, second thoughts about that. Gee, this isn't really fair. Let's try and get it changed. But the way they tried to get it changed wasn't the right way. So.
Tell me the same. I just want to grab it and start seeing.
That's all I have, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you. I did forget something, so forgive me. I'm going to get back up here. I want to extend great thanks from the community for the Lions, great work on the Easter egg hunt and the turnout, and you actually managed to get it in before the rains. And I look, you know, just all the smiling faces and the giggles and, you know, it's always a fun event each and every year. So thank you for all the hard work that goes behind the scenes beforehand and that day. So appreciate that and the breakfast and everything. Good work. All right, that takes us down to council comments, and we'll begin with Councilmember Casper.
Thank you. Let's see, I wrote down a couple of things to talk about. I gotta say, I was really impressed. I know the, I think the C-Trans guy left already, but I was really impressed with C-Trans mindset as to how they were looking at at improving their their quality of service. You know, the government has a, any government agency has a bad habit of doing the things that they've always done it. And when asked why, they say, because that's the way we've we've always done it. So for a government entity the size of of C-Trans to be forward thinking enough to create a system similar to private enterprise like Uber or Lyft or whatever it is to meet the needs of a growing community, a demographic changing community is is very, very impressive. And I think all of us that are, whether we're elected officials or government employees, can all take a lesson from from that and try and make some progress. So it was just a thought that I had after after I think he left. So but anyway, I really, I really appreciated his his presentation and that and the thinking behind that. Other couple of things that I was thinking is that I think our our city does a really good job of keeping and maintaining things, but sometimes we also need some fresh ideas to look. And it seems like we have an awful lot of problem with people in this microphone stand and it not being the right height. And I'm wondering if we can see if we can find one that's. I see that, which is amazing. Good, yeah. These are amazing, yeah. But that one, if we can get that one so that everybody from from Kimberly's height to Jeff's height can can use it, I think that'd be great. And then the last thing that I that I that I noticed just when I pulled in here is it it looks like the the rope on the flagpole out front might have broke because the or there's a bunch of slack in it or or something. Anyway, it's moving kind of unnaturally. So if we could take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. So. So if we could take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Casey?
Not yet, but I'll let you know if I come up with something.
Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. Again, just apologize for being late, but thanks for being understanding. It's fun to see those little ones out there in the parking stuff. They're silly. That's all I gotta say. But no, yeah, I guess spring's coming, kids are out. That's all the fun stuff that's going on right now. Everybody's probably just biting at the bit to go to summer, even though we got some snow today. That was kind of interesting. What's going on with what I've been up to? I've kind of, I don't know how much, I'm kind of working on something with Bob a little bit, Richardson, Chief Richardson, sorry, to kind of come up with an interim possible solution to having some sort of security around the city while we're trying to figure out a contract with Ridgefield or while we figure out any contract for that fact. And hopefully it'll at least give us some, a little bit more peace of mind if we can make that happen. But it's still just in the works at this time, but something that trying to get moving. It's obviously on the top of everybody's list, but we're going to keep trying to proceed with coming up with a solution. Other than that, yeah, I just want to, on record, thanks C-Trans for coming out. They've been awesome to work with and they're always just, yeah, right on top of things. So other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobin.
Yeah, thank you. I really didn't have much to say tonight until I heard Peter talking. You know, Peter, thank you for getting out here.
I don't know if this is.
Did you maybe switch it on? Does it need to go up there?
Hello?
From the IT guy.
You ready to hear me sing? Yeah. I wanted to thank you, Peter, for coming here to the meeting and giving us updates on the, the school. I think people like to hear that. They like to hear what's going on in the, in the schools. You know, what's really nice is you always hear about List Center Sports. I mean, everywhere I go, List Center Sports are doing this, are doing that. It was really nice to hear tonight about the academics. I mean, that's outstanding from the Oregon Trail all the way to birthdays. You know, it was just, it was really nice. It was really nice to hear and to know that you are dedicated into partnering with families instead of hiding things from families, which I think most people in this community can appreciate. So thank you again, Peter. That's pretty much all I had tonight. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. All right. We'll segue into staff reports and Public Works and Community Development Staff Report. We're back to you, Brian.
Thank you again, Mayor Protem. We are giving our new staff members right to work here, both on the Public Works and the wastewater side. Public Works side, mowing season has commenced here, even though it's still snowing. We also, there's been several trees that have been needing to be dealt with here, both down at the bottoms and around town that our crews have been taking down to improve safety and keep our parks and trails free. We are back sweeping weekly, which is great to see. Had some maintenance that was completed on our sweeper. It's getting to be a frequent maintenance item. So in the next couple of years, we'll probably want to talk about replacing it. It's sort of reached, reaching the end of its useful life. It was a used piece of equipment when we got it and we've had it for close to a decade, I think, at this point. So but in any case, it's working right now. So that is good news. On the admin side, we've really been working recently with our two new supervisors to relaunch our safety program here. So we're looking at a couple of different options for tracking and certifying safety training that we do. And we've kicked off our training or retraining process with heat stress training, which is a state required training. We also have bucket trucks, safety class scheduled here. And then we completed hearing screening today in conjunction with the City of Woodland. Over on the wastewater side, Jay, our new chief operator and supervisor, has been working on developing standard operating procedures for some of the equipment over there. He's also been working on putting together or starting to use our new asset management program, which basically has a database of when every piece of equipment down there is serviced. It helps us, remind us to do preventative maintenance when it becomes due. And then it also helps us track, you know, when the pieces of equipment might be reaching the end of their useful life because they're needing more frequent maintenance. Jay has also been getting familiar with the plant and also developing training processes, not only for himself, but for some new operators that we have coming down there hopefully soon. And he's also put together a process to reduce the need to do our bio solids drying or pressing from, it was a daily thing that we were doing five days a week. And now we're able to cut that down to four. So that saves on energy costs. That's a big energy consumer because it takes a lot of natural gas to dry that, those bio solids. And it also saves equipment wear. Again, going back to the asset management side of things.
How'd you manage that, Brian?
It's just basically an operational change. All the waste from the treatment plant goes to a big basin. And then from that basin, it goes into the dryer. And if we're able to settle that basin and draw off the liquids from it, then we don't have to dry it as frequently, basically. So I think the goal is to maybe even reduce it to like three days a week eventually, but we're kind of working our way into that.
Is this something that the new people had brought in with their experience?
Yes, it is.
Nice, very nice.
All right. There's plenty of else going on down there. Yeah, suffice to say, our new supervisors are doing excellent work and we're very happy to have them here. Over on the engineering side, we have a request for proposals for the horizontal curve warning signs and citywide safety project. Those are due. Well, I guess they're due later this week, actually. And so then we'll be scoring and selecting consultants to design that. That's a fully grant funded program about just over three quarters of a million dollars to improve safety on our city streets. Over on the community center kitchen, things are going well. Actually, a lot of the new kitchen equipment has already showed up. So so far, my fears of supply chain issues is unfounded. Hopefully that continues to hold. I think the last piece of major equipment we're waiting for is the hood, the fire suppression hood. So if that comes in, we'll be in good shape. And so far, it sounds like that's on track to get here in the next few weeks or so. So let's see. Over on the building department side, we are at 59 single family permits so far this year. So we've far exceeded last year's total amount already, year to date this year. The apartments over at Riverside are starting to wrap up. They have received occupancy on all but two of the buildings and just got a call this afternoon that they're ready for a third or one of the last. So that will just leave one building out there remaining for final occupancy. So building activity has really picked up this year after a significant slowdown last year. Before I jump over into community development, a couple of things I wanted to highlight that aren't on here, but one, just a reminder, so about a year ago, we updated our vendor code and that code allows us as the city to designate areas where vending is allowed. But currently, we haven't done that. So with spring weather, it's becoming vending season. So that's something that we, I wanted to bring to the council's attention and get some feedback if we want to have a discussion on identifying some areas. I think we have some ideas as staff that we could bring forward. And if council has any other ideas, we'd, we'd like to entertain that. But I think it's something that we should start thinking about here sooner rather than later if the council is interested in having that as a future agenda item.
Maybe a work session or something.
A work session.
Yeah.
All right, we will get that scheduled. And then for the periodic comprehensive plan updates, we had the joint work session with the planning commission a little while ago. And I think it was discussed then, one of the first major pieces of this is the countywide population forecast. Basically, the state's Office of Financial Management comes up with a couple of range of projections of population. And then the county selects one of those. And then after that, those are allocated to the various cities, that growth for the overall county. So next week, there is a hearing for, a public hearing for the county to select that growth rate. The cities have jointly put together a letter of recommendation to the county that will be signed by the mayor if we get sort of a consensus or a head nod from council that the cities are supporting the mid-growth option, which would be adding 175,000 new people between now and 2045 and 107,000 new housing units over that planning period throughout the whole county. So once that growth rate is selected again, then cities work with the county to allocate that out amongst, you know, all the cities, Vancouver, Camas, the center, Ridgefield, et cetera. And that happens a little bit towards the fall. And then we use that data to help basically look at all of our, you know, needs for land areas. It's really the foundation of the, the comprehensive plan process. So again, unless hear any concerns here, you know, we plan on submitting that letter jointly with, with the other cities. Jumping into the community development map here. Number one, Lockwood Meadows and number 37, Ace's View are in the engineering review process. Tony, the city engineer, has returned engineering comments, first round for both of those projects. So we're awaiting some response to those comments. Stevens Hillside is also a big focus right now. They're coming to the end of the project. All the public improvements are completed. This, that's number 13 on the map. We have a final plat that's been submitted. We also have a variance for adjusting some lot setbacks. Builder, which is New Tradition Homes, has requested this variance for a handful of lots, somewhere between 12 and 40. We're trying to, still trying to figure out exactly how many lots they want to vary setbacks on, but the, the primary reason is to be able to have them offer a single story product, which they say has been, you know, proving to be more popular. And it also helps us meet our goals for an aging population and aging in place. So we're working with them on that variance as well as a development agreement that will come to the council ultimately, that allows them to vary from the standard lot coverage. Our code regulates to 30% lot coverage for buildings, which is a little bit lower than other jurisdictions in the county. And so again, to be able to offer that single story product, in some cases, they need to go above that 35%. So we'll be back with that. And then we'll be talking more about Stevens Hillside, I guess, with the Boland Road contract here shortly. So I'll end it there.
With Stevens Hillside, I hear off and on about that curve in the entrance to the, has that been addressed anymore? I just, there's been some concern about the danger of the curve in the hill and.
So the site distance has been evaluated there, but that site distance assumes that people are going the speed limit. So if you recall back when we were putting together the budget, that was one of the projects we had was some radar speed signs. So those are on order right now. We're planning on placing them on, you know, coming down the hill, sort of both directions on Aspen there. And then we also are looking at adding some signs on Pacific Highway as well, sort of in each direction in areas where we've got frequent speeding complaints. And these, you know, the signs that not only alert drivers that they're speeding and, you know, flash, but we can also then collect data from that and see, you know, if there's peak times or, you know, maybe someone consistently is late for work and they're speeding through there. And then we can work with law enforcement to help, you know, tailor our enforcement activities, if you will.
Yeah. You, you bought signs that actually do data collection?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
I don't think I want to drive past it.
I don't know if this would fall under Public Works, but I know, well, since we're going to be talking about the recycling contract here coming up. I know I had mentioned in the past about possibly looking outside for other waste.
Yes.
Options, transferring options. I don't know how to say. I think it's, is it Waste Connections or what's the one?
Yeah, Waste Connections is.
Waste Control in Longview.
Oh, yes.
In Calhoun County. I just know that they service Northern Clark County for some people. So I didn't know if that's something that we wanted to look at.
That will be one thing we're talking about. There is some state UTC regulations that come into play there, but the short version of a preview for the, the study session is we're going to be looking at and hopefully having county staff come talk about the county's contract with Waste Connections. You know, currently we operate under that interlocal agreement. So we're basically under the county's contract. So they, they're going to talk about where that's at. We can also talk about the second option of ourselves negotiating our own contracts with Waste Connections or then that third option of the potential for an external hauler. But again, there's some, some other regulations that may make that challenging. So.
And I don't know if maybe we could get just, I know we do put stuff out on social media and stuff, but that would probably be one that would be something that if we could get, advertise it a little bit more, just so people have a little bit more awareness to maybe pay attention to this one. Because I just have heard varying concerns of, you know, how the new recycling, every other week thing has been going. So.
Okay.
It would definitely be in the community's best interest to come out and look, but I know a lot of times people find it hard to do that. So.
Any other questions for Brian?
The report, Brian.
Thank you.
You're not off the hook yet.
Nope.
And thanks to the award of Boland Road contract. So next.
All right. So back onto Stevens Hillside here. So that project received a preliminary plat approval back in 2018. And one of the conditions of approval was that the development provide right of way for the future connection of Boland Road, which our capital facilities plan calls East-West Collector Street for east-west circulation throughout the city here. In 2023, or excuse me, in last year, 2022, they came back for a post-decision review and sort of changed the layout of the project, but that condition remained in place. And so now, as I mentioned, they're getting to the end of construction. We're almost a final plat. And now is really the best time for us to identify that right of way so we can record it as a part of that final plat. And then instead of some sort of subsequent, you know, recording, that might be a little bit more challenging to, to identify that right of way. So the city's responsibility in all this is to first identify that right of way and then ultimately, when it's constructed, the city's responsible for that construction. It's, there's a pretty significant ravine, if we can pull up that map, that we have to get across. So there's a decent amount of work and thought that goes into it. We went out for proposals back in March and received three proposals. We scored those and selected PBS is the, the most responsive. Tight timeframe, as I mentioned, since this is coming to a close, we want to try and get this work done by the end of May to be able to identify all the right of way we would need to construct this across this ravine, including, you know, a bridge or a culvert or whatever we need to get across that creek. And essentially this road, there'll be an S curve from the far west side there. There's a cul-de-sac you can kind of see. It's a little hard to see. This isn't the best map. I apologize, but it's what we can find in a pinch. If you can scroll the other way, maybe. Other way. There we go. So you can see there's pretty sharp contours there, but basically this road will extend from that cul-de-sac roughly. It'll curve sort of to the north and then it'll curve back to the west and connect with what is currently the dead end of Boland Road on the far side of that ravine in the northwest corner of the property there. We had $75,000 in the budget for this. We came in with PBS as just a hair over that at 78,500. That's a not to exceed amount. So it could be less than that. It depends on how much time they're able and staff time, you know, gets billed to this and costs. But the, the general idea is that we will do some topography collection or PBS will with, do some drone photography or topography collection with LiDAR. And then we'll do an assessment of the creek and figure out the most cost effective way to cross that creek and then look at the topography and, you know, basically figure out how much right of way we need to build this road in the future so that we're able to make that east-west connection. So with that, happy to answer any questions about this project before the council considers awarding this professional service contract.
Can you go back to that map for me, please?
Yeah.
And you said it was the northwest. And you said it was the northwest corner?
Yeah, so that far northwest corner, it's barely just, it's off the parcel map here, but Boland Road basically dead ends in that, at that corner there currently. And so, this would basically link it across the ravine to, it's the east-west road in the subdivision. There isn't called Bol and they can't remember what number it is. It's. Oh, it's okay. That'll just confuse everyone more if I try and operate a mouse.
The southernmost road with the cul-de-sac.
The southernmost road. So, they built, the development built that southernmost road to the collector standard. So, it's a little bit wider than your typical residential street. The development has also put some bus stops and on some of the lots there for school bus. So, this is, again, it's a collector road, so it's a little bit larger, higher-capacity road than your standard residential road.
Will it remain as, or is that part of what the company's going to figure out is whether that cul-de-sac will remain or whether it be.
Use your mind.
Oh, sorry.
Are they going to figure out whether that cul-de-sac will remain or whether it'll just be an extension of the street?
The cul-de-sac would remain in place until this extension was completed and then it would act as a through street. So, the bulb-out part of the cul-de-sac would probably get removed as a part of that project and it would just be a contiguous road corridor through there, kind of sort of doing an S, backward S curve up into the north.
Gotcha.
Sidewalks?
Yes.
How deep is the ravine?
It's about forty feet deep.
There's no fish or anything down in that ravine or?
Well, that was, we, that was brought up here before the meeting started. According to the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, mapping it is a fish-bearing stream. Whether that's the reality is, you know, another point, but that's the regulation that we're, we have to assume it's a fish-bearing stream unless we do an extensive study to prove it's not. But in this case, you know, it's probably easier to just bridge across it and, and move on. Or culvert across it is the case, maybe. I think that's the preferred option at this point, you know, but we haven't actually got out there. That's part of this design is figuring out the best way to get across there at the lowest cost.
How stable are the soils?
They actually aren't too bad. We have, as part of this scope, geotechnical engineering, you know, they'll go out there and look at the soils, but they're not mapped as a landslide or liquefaction area or anything like that. So, hopefully, the, the actual field conditions match the mapping.
Before afters cleared. Questions?
No, I read through it, but with Brian explaining that, it, it kind of caused some confusion for me at first. So, now it's a little bit more clear, so.
I apologize, I should have had a, a sort of conceptual map. I think that would have cleared it up a little bit, what we were talking about here.
I'm, to be honest, still confused.
Oh, well, here, let me operate the mouse real quick.
Yeah, that might help a little bit. Yeah, laser pointer or something.
And for, for whatever reason, this map pops up a giant box, so that's helpful. But basically, so here's the cul-de-sac and the road would take off from there. It would curve to the north and there's a less steep area right here that we're trying to hug. And then it would, you know, so it would curve to the north and then it would curve back to the west and it would join in with the dead end of Boland Road right in this vicinity.
Gotcha. Way more sense.
And why do we want to do that? Just out of curiosity.
It's just so that we have additional east-west connectivity on our street networks. So, you know, right now, it's, it's a Pacific Highway and that's really the only way to get east and west. So, if there's, you know, traffic jams, there's a landslide on I-5 and everyone's going up Pacific Highway, then, you know, people can't, there's no other way for local traffic to get east-west. So, it's, it's building in some redundancy into the system essentially. And as, you know, growth continues to occur, it spreads out that traffic load amongst multiple streets versus just, you know, sort of one route.
Sure. I know, I think that pretty much sums it up for me.
Okay.
Sean, you okay?
Yeah, no, I mean, I at least understand what we're, yeah, looking at now.
And I guess I neglected to mention, but so the condition of approval is that the city identify this right-of-way. I think there's a timeframe of ten years. It's not exactly clear when that ten years started. So, we want to be really conservative and try and get it identified quickly. But, you know, at a certain point, that condition expires. So, if we don't do this study and identify this right-of-way, then our future ability to make this connection doesn't really fully go away, but then we'd have to actually pay to acquire the land potentially in the future, so.
And is that, that land that we're talking about on there owned by the Stevens Hillside development or is that?
Yeah, it is. So, it's being retained by the property owner. So, they're going to divide up, you know, into all those lots there, but that ravine piece remains with the owner. Yeah.
Okay.
And there's no fighting from them to do this type of study and such? They're, they're in agreement with it?
Yeah, I mean, it's part, it was part of the original discussion when the subdivision came forward that we would do this work, so.
I don't remember it, so.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Well, there's no numbers, so I'll do it. I move to authorize the mayor pro tem to sign the contract for the design of Boland Road with PBS Engineering as presented.
Second.
Third.
Motion and second to authorizing the mayor pro tem to sign the contract or the design of Boland Road with PBS Engineering as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, takes us down to, we have no ordinances and resolutions to come before us this evening. And next is unfinished business. And we have our discussion of the appointment process as well as appointment of mayor. Bronson, did you want to lead us through the process once, one more time?
Sure. Excuse me. I sent you an email last Thursday, which sort of gave you a little synopsis of options. But let me back up for a second and just talk about state law and what it provides on filling a vacancy on the council or in the mayor's position. And really, there is very little prescription from the state on what the process should consist of. The state law for Code Cities sets out causes of vacancy. And then it says that you fill the vacancy as provided in chapter forty-two twelve of the revised Code of Washington. And that says simply that council appoints a qualified person to fill either a council member or mayor position and that you're to do it within ninety days. And that's about the only thing that state law says on that. Other than, you know, there's parts of the Open Public Meetings Act that talks about the appointment process and what has, what can occur in executive session, which was the evaluation of qualification of applicants can occur in executive, but interviews and the actual selection has to incur an open session. So, what I've done in the past to council and in the email has said, you know, I think you have two options. One option to fill the mayor position is to appoint somebody from the existing council. And that's specifically recognized in the chapter on Code Cities, thirty-five A twelve. Says you can appoint an existing council member. Or you can do a process that you open it up to any qualified person to apply. And that's kind of the process that we've gone through in the past with filling council member vacancies. So, what I would propose to you is that, you know, this is pretty much your process because there is very little requirements in state law. So, what I propose is you first decide, do we want to appoint from the existing council? Or do we want to have a process where we go through a public notice and application process to anyone who would be qualified? And when I say qualified, that is simply a person who's over the age of eighteen, is a U.S. citizen, is a citizen of the state, will have resided in the city for one year prior to the next municipal election, which is November twenty-twenty-three. So, you know, very broad field of potentially qualified persons. So, I pose to you, what, what is your preference?
How do we decide that? Do we have to make a motion or discuss it first and then?
You could do it either way. I think if you looked at Robert's Rules of Orders, they say you do a motion and then discussion. But I, I have found in my experience, people are kind of more comfortable discussing things first and then doing a motion. Either way is fine, whatever you're most comfortable with. Why don't you kick it around first?
I'm thinking about making a motion to, I'm thinking about it, I'm not making it, to select, to select the mayor from within the council.
That's where my thought process is leading to.
Okay, well, if appoint somebody from the council, then, as I outlined to you, people can apply and say, hey, I want to be the mayor. Or you could nominate a person, assuming that person's willing to do it, they can be considered. A couple of points. I believe the mayor's position is compensated higher than the council member position. It is, okay. So, there isn't a formal opinion on this, but the informal banter among municipal attorneys is because your compensation would increase, you have a financial interest in the outcome of the selection. So, a person who applies or is nominated would not vote because they have a financial interest. Okay? If more than one person, well, is nominated or applies, we could go into an executive session to discuss the qualification of the candidates. We've got four council members here tonight, three is a quorum. So, assuming you have two.
Can we go into an executive session to discuss it?
You go into an executive session to evaluate the qualification of the applicant. Okay? So, you can't go into an executive session to talk about who the candidate should be.
Got it.
Okay? So, the first thing you would do, and that would be an open session, is either say, I want to apply or I want to nominate. And if we end up with more than one candidate, then you can go into executive session and discuss the relative qualifications.
No difference than what we do with counselors, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, Casey, now your chance.
I would like to make a motion that we select the new mayor from within the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I forgot what you said now. And to elect the mayor from within the existing council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, that one's taken care of.
Next?
Next, is anybody interested in applying or does anybody wish to nominate somebody?
I'll just start, are you going to go first, Liz? Are you, I don't, you were just about to talk.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just, I was just going to, but I had a little bit to say before. I'm, I'm going to nominate Tom Strobin to be in the running for this new mayor position. And I just want to say with that, Liz, I do appreciate so much the role that you've taken and the leadership that you provided to us in absence of the mayor during his absence for his health reasons and stuff. And I do appreciate your, everything that you've done on council and your opinions. And you're very insightful in a lot of different ways. And so, it's nothing personal, but I just, anyways, I would like to nominate Tom for the new mayor.
Right.
You should indicate if you'd be willing to serve in that.
Yeah, I, I accept.
Okay. I think, are there other nominations or anybody else wishing to apply?
Can't nominate myself.
Yeah, you can. You can.
All right, I will. I would like to be considered for the mayor position and a number of reasons, actually. I'd like to continue to work with closely with the staff as I have for the last two and a half years and build better communications between the community and the schools and all of the different organizations that we have and rebuild the center as a community of kindness and one of hope for not only our youth, but for all of us to really quit taking for granted what we have and what we're blessed with here. And to bring new ideas to the council and to the community and to the school as well, to bring partnerships, as Pete has brought forward, ways that we can work stronger together and think out of the box in terms of coming up with solutions that work for everyone. And my heart is in this community, always has been since I moved here and married my local boy. And, you know, I, I've really given a lot of years to this community and I'd like to continue seeing it through and working with the Cowlets. I was the first mayor to meet with them and start positive discussions with them about, you know, their plans and how we could work together. And I'd like to continue that path with their new tribal chairwoman and also work with many of the businesses that we have now coming to us and the legislators that we've been able to build great relationships with and continue that dialogue so that we can move forward as quickly as possible and get new business established and welcomed into the community. And that's what I would like to see happen. So, police coverage is also important, but it takes a heck of a lot longer than any one of us ever thought it would. And so, I think we welcome the continuing ideas that everybody brings forward and working with the chief to see what we can make happen for the community. You know, it takes every one of us coming together as a strong team and keeping those ideas in our workshops coming forward that we can roll up our sleeves and figure out how do we make it happen? And how do we make it happen quicker than we'd like? You know, show other communities how to do it instead of always falling, you know, as you said, Casey. Every job I've ever taken, I've, the first question has always been, you know, why do we do it that way? And I think that has to continue. So.
So, are other nominations or applications? Okay. Okay. So at this point, you could go into executive session and discuss the qualifications of the two column candidates. You know, there could be a question as to whether or not the people, the candidates should participate in that or not, or recuse themselves or not because of potential conflict or bias. But if you did, then we'd only have two council members in the executive session. And so there is something that's legally called the doctrine of necessity. And that is when even if there is a potential conflict, if it's necessary for the persons to participate in order to have a quorum, you can do so. So I would ask you whether or not you wish to adjourn into executive session and discuss qualifications.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn into executive session.
How much time do you want?
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen?
Fifteen, and we can always come back out and extend it if we need to, so.
Okay.
Are we going into it with them or are they just going in themselves?
No, all of us.
Yeah. All right, at 8:03, we will recess and go into executive session and come back in 15 minutes. So, thank you, everyone.